This video presentation is made possible by Brewster Services Group.
For October 1st, everybody stand, we have our prayer and pledge, the pledge pray. Father God, we thank you for the day that you've given us, Lord. Father, just be with us as we conduct business. Father, just help lead and guide us. Father, we thank you for all the blessings you've put upon us. Father, keep our troops safe, Father. And again, we thank you for all the blessings you've put upon us. That's all these things you name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Did you just hear? Oh, he ain't in there. September 10th, board meeting minutes. Anybody got any questions on those?
I'll make a motion.
Why are you not making motions today, Mr. Newman?
I'm more making motions.
Probably do that at home. Lois, making a motion would get that merit. Yeah. I usually get voted down. All right. Anybody have any questions? It'll be September 10th. We'll move on. Coach approvals. Mr. Gannon?
We have two from Philadelphia, volleyball and basketball. And then North Middle, Jeff Coles actually an employee for Lenore City, a teacher for Lenore City, and that's a joint program. But since we're paying him, I wanted to go ahead and have that on there for transparency sake. And I believe today Ms. Lowry hired a new head coach for their baseball team, Chris Claybo. So he was an assistant coach, so now he'll be a paid head coach. So I'll have his name added for the actual meeting next week, but that's an addition to that. But principals have recommended that those folks be a good coach at their school.
Any questions? I make a motion. God, mighty, I'm gonna kill him. I will say this, that North Middle girls track team's doing really well.
Yeah, of course, she can't be great. She's really fast.
Yes. Very. All right, moving on policy updates. Second reading.
There are no changes from first reading, so we're still good to go on those.
Any questions? All right, moving on, budget amendments. God, watch how he stress up here. Just the beard. It's like a body. I'm just looking at that beard, like I said.
We've got 141 and 142 tonight in your packets there. We'll start with 141. There's only two amendments on there for our general purpose budget, and they're both donations for Cindy Purdy. $1,500 she received for clothing needs for students and also $2,000 that she received for student supply needs. Those are just ins and outs. We received the money and then she expends it out of her budget. Also, on the 141 budget, another thing I changed was the fund balance. That will be on the bottom. It's titled page 22. That's the beginning fund balance. That's the same number that was presented to commission a couple of weeks ago at their most recent meeting. The books for last year have been closed, so they presented 101 and 141 at that meeting. So this is the number based on the year end report that Tracy Blair generated. I plan on changing the fund balance, the beginning of the fund balance twice a year going forward. Now, whenever they finish the year end, and then whenever we get the audit back. They haven't started the audit process, but it shouldn't change much to what you see right there. Again, that is the updated fund balance based on the year end report. Are there any questions about 141? Okay, 142, there's changes in almost every sub fund that we have. I want to give you a summary of what took place. We've got carryover in Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, IDEA. We have IDEA discretionary grant that has carryover, and we have IDEA preschool that has carryover. So we added carryover in all those sub funds. These are all uploaded to E-Plan, which is our state reporting website, and they've all been approved by the state. Carl Perkins is also listed on there. They do not receive carryover, but they are completing an amendment to add money to their supply line for student industry certifications. But if you guys have any questions about those, you can let me know, but it's all carryover funds that go in.
What happens, this is our federal funds that come in and go right back out, and essentially when the state closes out their books, what we had left from last year, they roll over, call a carryover, and we get to budget it for this year because the federal money's good for 15, not 15, 15 plus, 27 months. So we can carry that over, and then we spend that.
And it's different percentages based on which fund it is. Some of them are 15, or the majority of them are higher because of.
Yes, sir. Especially like Title II, which is our PD, since we didn't get to do much PD last year and hardly any travel in the spring, so we've got money left over there.
That's all I have, if there's any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. 21, 22, school calendar.
The calendar that you have in front of you, I've got input from the principals of schools on that. It's very similar to this year's, last year's, year before, year before that, year before that. Fall break, second full week, and then spring breaks the same week, Easter and that. One thing that's not on the calendar that I am going to do though is this year, you know, we started with the three day stagger. We had a third of kids, third of kids, third of kids for the first three days. So as you, when you look on our first day of classes, Wednesday, August 1st, we'll do a third on Wednesday, a third on Thursday, and a third on Friday, and then bring the full population back on Monday. That seemed to be a really big hit with the teachers, and I think the parents appreciate that too, because the teachers could get to know the kids a little better, a few numbers in there, and then we get to the beginning of the year process down for schools. So I am going to do that. That's not in the calendar, but that's something I plan to do. I have a couple of fewer, there's 180 days in the calendar, 180 kid days. We can ask for permission to use a couple of those for PD days if we want to. I didn't do that this upcoming year because I felt like, one, it's more important to have those student days in there, and two, it gives me a couple of extra stockpile days that I can use to do that stagger with in the start school and not impact any of our winter weather days. So, but other than that, it's essentially the same calendar we've got now. Any questions on that?
So you know, we'll move on. Winter, spring sports reopening guidelines.
This is back to where we were in the summer, where we decided, essentially you need to decide capacity for basketball. I put winter and spring on there because I would prefer you go ahead and determine capacity for spring sports like baseball, soccer, and all that stuff too, so we don't have to keep bringing this up. We can wait on that piece if you want to, but we do need to determine capacity on basketball. The governor did take action and lifted gathering sizes, but that doesn't impact school functions and school athletics. So you guys are still, you guys are still in charge of setting that. I've talked, and Tinker has talked to some surrounding counties. They've not, not everybody's landed on something yet. I think several are looking at third capacity. And you'll see Mr. McIntosh and Ms. Lowry out here in the gym, or I asked them to come sit for talking about their gyms. I think it's really, what we've seen with football is people have naturally thinned themselves out. You didn't set a capacity limit, and I've been to every game, and there is room if you want to social distance at a football game because people aren't comfortable coming, just have to come. Would you verify that, those of you that have been there? So I don't know how that will play out inside in the gym though, and I also want to be, you know, socially conscious of what we're doing. Typically, there's a few games that we'll see full capacity, like the middle school gyms, when North plays Lenore City, when North and Philly play, some of those rivalry games. So what I've asked the middle school principals is if we can, we're going to try to schedule those rivalry games in the high school gym, so that we've got more space. So that'll help alleviate that. But I think, I think the sticking point, if you, and I'm good with whatever you want to do, a third, a half, or no limit, the sticking point, which is the reason I asked Ms. Lowry here, in my mind, the sticking point is North Middle. Their capacity's about 490. So if you decide to do a third up there, then you're running 160 something people in the gym. If you decide to do a half, you're at about 225, 240. So that's, that's the sticking point. The other gyms, you could say, and just to be quite honest with you, some districts set a third capacity, knowing that they're never going to reach a third capacity anyway. So it's more of a political statement. You know what I'm saying? They can say no capacity, and it's still the same number of people coming, because if they can hold 3,000 in their gym, and they don't normally have 1,000 people come to a basketball game, they can say a third, it really doesn't affect operations. If we say a third or a half, it's going to affect operations specifically at North Middle, in my mind. In some of the other gyms, Fort Loudon Middle, probably not. Loudon High School, probably not. But those are some of the things that, you know, we need to decide, or you all need to decide as a board, how we want to address, address those.
Now, we've already scheduled our game with them at the high school.
And we'll do that as much as possible, and unless we've got a couple rivalry games on the same night, you know, I think that's achievable, and I think Mr. McIntosh is willing to work with us on that too, to utilize their facility as much as we can.
Does Lenore City and North Middle play twice during the season? Yeah, we're in the same district now. And you'll play both games at Lenore City High School? Yeah, and what we've done on that is we get one gate and they get one gate. I was going to ask how you're going to structure that. And then, so we don't have to carry concessions over. We let the Busch Club at the high school do their concessions, because they usually do it anyway. We don't have to fool with it. All we got to do is send a gate worker, and I think they wanted us to have our SRO the night that Lenore City's not, we got to have our officer. Sure not, you got to have your officer.
And Jody may work with Lenore City on some games, and I mean, like when they play Philly, which is a big crowd, we could play that at Loudon High School. That wouldn't be an issue, you know, if they're playing somewhere else, they may want to stay on the northern end and work with Lenore City. But we've got the capability to use our Loudon High School.
I worked out a new year end school game, or you just got. Yeah, they, I talked to Mark O'Duffin, because his gym's so big that they can spread out. I don't know if he's going to have all his classes.
He's going to use his video crew, his tech crew, and stream it to the classroom, so they can watch it from the classrooms, maybe let just the eighth graders come watch it or something like that to keep the.
That's what Lenore City's doing, just eighth graders and both in the classroom. Of course, he's going to sell that, he got him a nice slushy machine, that's all I've heard. Roll that thing around, sell slushies.
But really, that's the preference of the board. Whatever you guys want to do is what we'll follow. So what are your thoughts on that?
See, I know a lot, when we met, when we had our district meeting with our teams that's in our district, a lot of them are doing the same thing, going to the high school, playing. Like when we go down and play Migs, we're going to be, because their gym's kind of small, anyway, we're going to the high school to play. So I don't think it's going to be much of a problem, except just.
And I think Ms. Lowry, you'd pulled your ticket sales for me for last year.
It was over 400. Cherokee's the next.
She had, you had three games that were probably.
Cherokee, Lenore City, and Fort Loudon are the three highest.
So those would be the three we'd try to schedule at one of the high schools, obviously, but.
Cherokee was around 3 and 370 something, and then Fort Loudon.
I think Cherokee's going to do all their, I think they've got, a lot of theirs going to the high school, that's what they were saying.
We could say for our home game, we could play at one of the high schools for Cherokee.
I wish they had a crystal ball, but I don't. If it's like football, I don't think there's an issue, but I mean, I can't say it's going to be that way, so I don't, I don't know.
I'd say you just lay them. If they don't want to come, they're not going to come.
I can agree. I think that those higher attendance games, you go ahead and just make, you know, other accommodations, and I think you'll be fine, if that's our only school that we're worrying about.
That's the only one I'm currently worried about. Would you agree with that, Mr. Tinker? You've looked at that in depth?
Yes, sir, I think that's, that's the one that have the issue.
And we talked about maybe moving the Fort Loudon Philadelphia game to the high school, because it should usually, it's the in-county games that typically be the bigger crowds.
Are we doing fourth and fifth grade basketball?
I think just, I think Highland Park and Eaton, North Middle have combined, they're the only ones that's playing. I left that up to the principals some.
Those would be, I mean, if you're playing at Highland Park.
The Loudon principals, I don't think felt comfortable moving forward with that, but and then I think they combined up there, so I'm not sure if they're playing.
The way we told them to do that is, is when they come in, it's just kind of like they've been doing travel ball. You come in, you do your temp check, and you have to clear out, do a sweep of everything, and then bring the next group in, just like they do for, the way they did this for AAU and stuff.
And with the basketball, the temp checks, the mask, everything's still in place. They have said, we've not seen anything in writing yet, but their, TWS double A's indicating once it hits to like the district playoffs and stuff, that they'll limit to a third capacity for those games if things stay as they currently are. But they typically use McMinn, I think it's county, that seats 6,000 or something, and a third capacity's still 2,000, which is more than any one of our gyms hold, so it goes back to that venue issue, so.
I think they plan to do it the same way Chairman Johnson was talking about. After each game, those fans clear out, the next group of kids and parents and fans come in.
I think they're doing the same thing with the football championship, is we're used to be able to go down and watch all 1A, 3A, and 5A all the same day. You watch 1A, you're cleared out, they clean, and then 3A comes in, and same, same.
Another thing for the middle schools, I don't know if the high schools are doing it, we're not using locker rooms, we're coming dressed. All we got to do is get our shoes and stuff on, take the warmups off, and we're ready to go. So nobody's using locker rooms. So. Plus, they also put a thing in that if you've got five players, you play. So if you, best player's out or whatever, you've still got to play. We call that the greenback rule though. That's the greenback rule. I thought you were sitting there, Phil. That's rough.
So am I gathering that you probably are just in favor of then what we did with football, not limiting capacity moving forward, or?
I think that's a good idea.
Then that's what we'll vote on Thursday then. Can we say that that will be true for spring sports as well, so we don't have to revisit the same thing?
Yeah.
And if something changes, we can revisit it. You know, if we have, it's a constantly fluid situation anyway. If we start seeing spikes within the community, then we can always come back together and say, let's take another look at this. Sounds good, thank you.
All right, moving on. Board planning?
Yes, I know we have several of you that need to schedule your vacations out farther in advance, so this is the time we did it last year, it's the Friday before spring break, so I wanted to see. You can make it any date you want, I just, that's just a starting point for you all to discuss. If you all are good with that, then we can, we can set that. If not, if somebody else has another date or something, then we can look at that. I feel like we can get it done in one day again, like we did last, last year.
Everybody good? All right, discussion of substitute pay?
A board member had approached me about this, because they had saw that we're advertising a lot for substitutes right now, which we are, and we, we still need substitutes, we still need bus drivers. We're struggling, to be honest with you. But Mr. Presley did some research for me and called some surrounding counties to check on substitute pay and different things like that. There are several counties around, we pay $60 for someone that doesn't have a license and $70 for someone that does to substitute a day.
Do they have a driver's license?
Yeah, a teacher license. A lot, a lot of systems around us are very similar. Some pay more for the one with the teaching license, and some, some actually, which I thought was a novel idea, a couple of them, and Kim, I think Rome County may have been one of them, pays more if you're a retired teacher than if you just have a license or if you, if you are non-certified. But just, and some pay quite a bit more than we do. But to be honest with you, what he found is, no matter what they pay, they're still having trouble right now finding subs. So I think we need to look at increasing that, maybe $10 a day, but I don't know that the budgeting process would be a better time to do that. If I thought the $10 a day now would get me more subs, I would be telling you, let's do it. You're looking probably at about $35,000 to $40,000 a year impact on the budget. So that's fairly significant, and we might want to look at that. But I can move either way. If you are interested in doing that now, we can move forward with that. If you'd rather look at that in the budgeting process, because I think it is something we need to look at moving forward. I just don't know that it's going to fix our problem right now. I don't think we can throw money at it and fix it, there are just not people out there right now. Quite honestly, with unemployment benefits, it's hard, it's hard to get folks right now to do that and, and drop the buses, so.
I think you need to make it part of the budget process. I like that idea of the retired teachers.
I thought that was a good idea too, so we might want to add that third layer. That's why I said it might be, we might be able to get a better plan if we did it during the budgeting process and have three layers instead of two. And then, because that's our best job, because they're still in the community, and now obviously they don't want, a lot of them don't want to go right now, even as of COVID, but moving forward, then.
We've got a lot of retired professionals in Delco Village that we could, I'm sure there's teachers in there.
Okay, so we'll make that part of the voting process. Thank you.
You want to do, talk about employee raises?
Somehow or another, when we were supposed to dip into fund balance, $2 million, we managed to add $455,000 to fund balance. I apologize that we made money last year, but we, we saw an increase in sales tax revenue, the county did. We probably, we showed a little over $300,000 in excess revenue that wasn't budgeted, about $670,000 just in sales tax, but we saw a reduction in property tax because Lenore City gets a greater portion of the split with ADM now. But we saw a little over $300,000 in excess revenue, which is fantastic. With the three month closure, we realized some savings from things that we didn't spend money on last year. And if you remember, I purposely told you last year, I'm going to roll the technical money into fund balance, which was $200,000, because I didn't know what a revenue was going to look like. Well, our revenue came out really good, and some of the things we did on purpose to save money last year rolled into fund balance. So essentially, we've got about $455,000 more in fund balance now than we had last year. 2% raise would cost us about $525,000, which is pretty comparable to what we rolled, or what we gained in fund balance. So I would feel comfortable recommending that we retroactively give a 2% raise to all of our employees in the school system. I know the county gave a 2.5% raise, I think. I went down and talked with the budget committee for commission. When Ms. Blair brought our fund balance numbers to me about 30 minutes before that meeting and shared it with them, I knew they were looking for a way to get us money, but I knew they were having trouble finding one. And I knew when they saw we increased instead of decreased our fund balance, that they weren't going to be as likely to give us some funds now. But I did let them know that yes, we could give a raise with the money that we have, but that I would, I'm not going to come back down there in the spring and make personnel cuts because I can't sustain that raise moving forward. And then I would need them to help us to sustain that raise moving forward, and the majority of that committee gave me reassurance that they felt like they would take care of us in the spring. So I appreciate what they're doing, assuming all that works out. Given that fact, and given where our fund balance is now, I feel comfortable, since we didn't give employees raises this year or last year, that we should go ahead and retroactively do that. If you decide to do that, then commission would vote on that in November. So I would have Kathy Tucon apply the first half to the December check, and then we just space the rest of them out in the spring. Anybody have any questions on that, or?
If we ask for 2.5, what would that be?
2.5 would put us closer to 700, 675, 700,000. I still want to ask for raises for next year too, so that's.
Probably get the two.
Yeah, that, I feel more, I don't think they're going to, and they may not say anything if we do 2.5. I know at the previous commission meetings, 1.5 and 2 was thrown out for BOE raises, so I don't think we'll get criticized for doing that, not that that matters, but I think having a good relationship with commission helps in the long run. So I just feel like a 2%, when we weren't expecting to do anything, is a good way to, good way to go. And then, depending on how things flow out, you know, we can tack that other half on what we're wanting to do next year, if we can, or something in that nature. But I'll do whatever you guys want me to do.
That's day two. Okay.
And that's, I will have, if it pleasers the board, I will have Chad do a budget amendment, including the 2% raises in, for you all to vote on at the meeting. I didn't ask him to do all that work, because I didn't know if he wants to go 1.5, 2, 1, and that's a lot of work. So he'll go ahead, he's prepped and ready. He's, he's ready to go, and he'll get that, he'll get that adjusted, and we'll get that out to you, so we can vote on that next week, and then get it to commission, where we get all that rolling in.
Well, I don't know what you did when you went down there, but we appreciate it. Although if you were smiling, you'll be, I don't know. His name wasn't Vance. I'm not going to go there. Thank you.
I appreciate your transparency. I think that that weight has a lot of weight when people see, and they know that it's upfront, and that makes a big difference. And as you, as you know, relationships are a big part of it, and I appreciate that.
Any more discussion on that? Moving on, board committees. I was talking to Mike. I'd like to keep the budget policy and maintenance that we had last year, and then, of course, we got the ethics committee, keeping it the same, so.
You'll name the budget policy and maintenance committee, is that correct?
Yes. And then the board needs to vote on the ethics committee, so.
So you guys are voting to establish those committees, and then voting on the members of the ethics committee?
Yes. And is there any other committees you all want? That's another question.
I feel like those seemed to function pretty well for us last year, and I plan to do the same thing this year with the budget and start that earlier, like we did last year. We're going to get something in place before we have our planning session, so that that can soon enough have something in place in February. It's going to be a big unknown as far as revenue from the state, because they've got a lot of decisions to make, because a lot of systems like ours have lost a lot of students to homeschool, which affects your BEP funding, so we're lobbying the state hard to hold harness on that, so that could, you know, impact our funding quite a bit, but that's yet to be seen.
Any discussion? All right, we'll move on to 2020 local education agency compliance report.
I just, you all just have to prove that we're following state law, which to my knowledge we are, so not a lot of discussion on that. We have to do that every year.
Congratulations, Kim, you're level one.
Thank you.
You did virtual.
Which is kind of funny, because I was headed home, listening to the thing, and they said my name, and I was like, why didn't they ever say that? So that was quite a surprise.
Did you get your certificate? They said.
I did.
Did you get your check?
Okay, we need to talk about that. That's not game at all. But it was a surprise, I was not expecting that, so it was a surprise.
It's kind of weird doing everything virtual.
Well, and what's crazy is, is I was listening to it on my phone, which is I come through Paint Rock, let me tell you, that's touch and go. If I ever break down, I'm walking. But, so I was about to lose service, and it came on, and I was like, what'd they say? What'd they say? So I missed part of it, I think, because it was, you know, but anyway, it was.
So you really are not a level one.
No, I got the certificate. I got the proof.
My favorite part of this meeting was when we had Dr. Jed. All right, move on. Board of Distinction presentation.
You all have done a great job and met all the requirements to be a board of distinction again. So at the meeting next week, there'll be a representative from TSBA that comes to present the board with the Board of Distinction award, so I wanted to make sure you all knew that they would be coming and that that would be happening, so.
So we need to look nice.
Yeah, I'm sure maybe Jamie will put it in the paper, so if you all want to.
What about Jamie? You want to get that in favor?
So that's, you know, not every, not every board can do that or does that in the state, so that says a lot that you all have done that again and continue that honor, so that's good. Good stuff.
Got anything else?
Just a couple of. Just a couple of quick things. And I don't know if you remember back, during the last board planning session, I had expressed concerns about mental health issues and things like that, and how I'd really like to get a social worker, and I was trying to, so in our Title IV federal grant money, I got approved money for half-time social workers, so that's a start. And we actually got someone hired last week and started today, was her first day. She'll be based out of Loudon High School and served mostly the high school and middle schools, so we're excited that we're starting to head down that road. So hopefully, part-time will eventually move into full-time if we can get some additional grant monies and things like that. So that's something I'm proud that we got accomplished that we talked about last year. The second thing is, you will see some media on learning loss. The Commissioner of Ed and Governor put some information out there. I typically don't criticize or dispute things, but that's not reflective of Loudon County. They utilized a national study that they did for, and I think the national study's coming out this evening, for 17 or 20 states. Essentially, what they did was they took some TCAP test data from 14, 15, and 16, 17, and ran it to predict 17, 18 scores, and then compared it to the 17, 18 scores to get a model. And then they threw an algorithm in there to figure out what learning loss would be if you weren't in school. Has anyone else seen schools closed in the spring since we've been around? So there's no way to figure that exactly, but they had an algorithm to do it. Anyway, they come up with 65% learning loss for math, which could be as high as three years' worth of learning, and 50% for reading. Now, what I'm going to tell you, I'm not going to dispute what they said, because I don't do those type things, but I will tell you in Loudon County, that before we left for spring break, we gave a Common Formative Assessment Test, which we always do every year, and the teachers use that to predict how the kids are going to do on TCAP at the end of the year, which is just, so they can adjust their instruction for TCAP on areas that were lacking. So I had all the schools give that, before this study even, I knew about this study, I had all the schools give that test the week of Labor Day again. So if I was a fourth grader, then that test that I took in the spring of last year, as a fifth grader, I took that test again, Labor Day, because I wanted to see what the actual learning loss was, so we knew where to, where we needed to address things before the state did whatever it is they did. We averaged 0% to 2% learning loss in reading. So essentially, after a month's worth of instruction, the kids were back where they were when they left us at spring break last year. We saw an 8% to 10% loss in math. So they're almost back to where they were in math when they left us in the spring. Our teachers have been working really hard, our administrators have been working really hard, our kids have been working really hard, and I feel like by the time we get back from fall break, we will have met that math gap as well, and then, you know, be cranking on into next year. So our learning loss is not as significant as the state's learning loss is, or whatever they've put out as. But I want you to know, we have actual Loudon County data that shows that ours isn't as significant. Was their loss, yes. Was it that significant, no. And I think that's attributed to what the teachers did in the spring, trying to stay up with the kids and give them things. And then what they've done since schools started back, not only prepping them for remote instruction, if we have to go, but utilizing the computers, but filling in those gaps from last year. Now, I'm not going to paint a rosy picture, because I still think our first and second graders are still going to be a little bit behind, because we don't start review for them with TCAP in the spring. They're still learning how to read. So our first and second grade teachers still have a lot of work cut out for them to make sure that our first and second graders are filling in those gaps in reading instructions specifically. But I feel like they're doing a good job, and we're going to get there. So I wanted to make you aware, because, you know, when you hear things in the media, if you don't hear anything any different, then you assume that's the truth, which I'm not saying is not the truth, but it's not our truth here in Loudon County.
They go brain dead, they go to Nashville.
Something happened on that one, I don't know. The last piece of information I have is, I sent out a scholar last Friday, I'll send another one out tomorrow, letting the virtual families know that, hey, if you want to come back in person, let your principal know, you can transition back in, so you can start back with us after fall break. I anticipate we'll have about, probably 160 to 170 transition back in that we'll have in class after fall break. That was virtual when we started school. So we've had several come back, and we've had several indicate this week to our principals that they tend to come back. So, you know, in-person, it seems to be going quite well, I think, for us right now. So I feel like the procedures that you all have put in place has helped us be able to achieve that, so.
What is the total number right now that are still virtual?
We started with 750 virtual. As of the end of last week, we were down to about 680, 670 virtual, and then we've already had about 70 indicate this last week that they're going to come back after fall break, which would put us, I think we'll be down closer to 600, or 580, 580 to 600 number, hopefully, after fall break. But right now, we're at about 670. Is that correct?
Yeah. One more question. When you were talking about the social worker, just out of curiosity, the kids that are in elementary schools, they do get guidance on a regular basis? They've got a guidance counselor?
Yes, every school has a guidance counselor, and what the social worker is going to do is work in conjunction with all nine guidance counselors, and wherever we have the greatest, if we have a student with particular need, in elementary schools as well, they could go there. It's just a halftime person, can't go everywhere all the time. But she's going to be triggered when we have specific needs like that, yes.
But those kids are in elementary, they, like, that guidance counselor is in that regular rotation, especially where those kids are getting guidance on a regular, they're not, like, if you need to talk to the guidance counselor, you may go speak to the guidance. It's not that kind of scenario, is it?
I think it's both. They're in the regular rotation, but a lot of schools also have some time just for them to do groups and individual counseling. Different at each school, but for the most part, yes. And some middle schools run them in the rotation, too. But it starts, you're right, it starts transitioning back out, closer you get to high school, it's just usually more.
You just have to trust them if they don't ever see them, except when there's a problem. They don't trust them, so they won't tell.
Yeah, and mental health is still a big issue, not just for us, but especially with kids not being out.
It's only getting worse.
Yeah, it's just getting worse, so we're going to need additional help as we move forward. That's all I've got, sir. Any other questions?
Anybody got anything else? Dave's Kayla's birthday. I think we should sing Happy Birthday.
I think we should sing.
I'm sorry.
You go ahead and sing.
You go ahead and ask your question, then we'll sing.
Can you give everybody an update, having we been pat under quarantine since we started?
Yes, we've had, oh, 48 positive cases, that's students and staff combined, since school started and we're going into our ninth week. So if you do the average, that's about one a day, which out of 5,000 is not too bad, I'll take that. As far as quarantine, we're running about 200 have been quarantined over the last nine weeks. Health Department does that, but we do the contact tracing for them, so that's the number. So I've been very, very pleased with the number, you know, 40 out of 5,000, that's pretty good. We've had less than 10 staff members over the last nine weeks, so that's one a week on an average. And that's what's going to get us in trouble, if we start seeing a lot of staff get quarantined or positive, that's when we have to flip the remote if we can't man the buildings. But we've been fortunate with that so far. I appreciate the question. And the, just so you're aware, too, we do a call-out to this, every time we have a case, we do a call-out to the school, to everybody in the school. Our principals physically call every kid that has to be quarantined to talk to their parents, but then we do a sky alert, so the whole school knows that we've had a case. And then the state, Tennessee Department of Ed, has a COVID dashboard, where you can look and see what every system in the state has had as far as cases for the prior week, and we submit our data to that dashboard as well.
Can you notify, like, the, like, a kid if they come down with, if they test positive, and that kid's been through the rotation of specials and whatever classes they have, those teachers are notified that this kid has tested positive, so that they are not...
The principal, when they do their contact tracing, every class that kid's been to, they go and talk to that teacher and say, who's been, have you been within six feet of that child for more than 15 minutes? Who has been within six feet of that child? That's how we do the contact tracing. So they're all notified, because they're part of the process.
Yes, good deal.
Anybody else got anything?
I have a question.
Nope.
You were talking about, I made some notes, you were talking about the school calendar. Would it be possible to have the high school graduation dates published ahead of time?
May the 15th for Loudon High School, may the 14th for Greenback.
The reason I ask that is, usually about the end of March, early April, we will hear from extended family members, the people who are trying to make plans, and it's never on there.
We can add that, Kayla can add that to the calendar.
That would be a big help. And also, on the Philadelphia-Fort Loudon game, can we make sure that's not on the high school night? Because I've got our junior radio broadcasters that will be covering that.
I think TWS double A has asked middle schools not to schedule games on a high school night, because they're short referees. Is that correct, Bobby?
That's on our association, yeah.
That'd be great.
Hopefully they're.
I have a question. Did I get fired?
No, you, you do your, what they do, but we have.
Oh, okay, I was just making sure I ain't got fired.
Broadcasting, recording some of the games, I just want to make sure that they are...
So you got fired, right? That's what I heard.
I've got some up-and-comers that did all of the places.
Get that Jeremy, he got fired.
And I did talk to the city of Loudon this week, and I secured the amphitheater again for graduation. Everybody seemed to really enjoy that out there, so I said of doing it. And no matter whether there's COVID or not COVID, we'll be doing it at the amphitheater again on the, so I think that'll be a good deal. And also, just to plug the city, I got a letter from Mark Harrell today. During the Christmas parade, they, the City of Loudon Christmas Parade, they've invited teachers to be the grand marshal. So I think that's pretty cool, that they're recognizing the teachers in that fashion, so.
Yeah. Anybody else got anything? So, anybody in the audience, can you speak about anything on or not on the agenda? All right, seeing none. Whoa, whoa, whoa. You want to sing?
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear Kayla, happy birthday to you.
And you may or not be getting an apple watching.
Definitely not.
Definitely not getting apple watching. Sweet Cheeks going to take you out to eat, though. I've called him. All right, we're done.